Yeah.
Okay, now we're recording. And I'd like to call the meeting to order once again. And this time it's three forty. And who would like to make that motion?
Eric makes the motion.
Please second.
Please second, all those in favor? All right. Very good. Thank you all. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh organizational meeting?
I want them.
Okay, Sarah, the second?
Eric second.
Uh, well, she and each other. Uh, all those in favor?
All right.
And is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three?
I don't know.
Okay. And Joe says, all right, all that's in favor?
All right.
Hi, very good, thank you. Uh, now, let's just go over that again, because I did so busy talking that I didn't write down anybody's name. What was, um, yeah, but. Uh, the first second was Sarah, right? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, okay.
No.
Uh, that, 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 that. Uh, and who did the, uh, agenda? Eric makes the please?
Yeah.
She asked, asked.
Thank you, all right. Give us our chance, and watch yourselves.
We're doing public, which is nice. Yes.
Okay, hearing that, there is no public, all right. Uh, any report from the friends?
I missed the friends' meeting, but the friends are still getting their authors. And they're also running April first, a trivia fundraiser here at the library.
April first?
April first.
That's not one at all.
In our first show. And these come. Is there, like, I'm assuming it's like a and twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
With, and there are their teams. You can make your own teams, it's just a typical trivia, where it'll be library, local history, and anything else. And the president won't be running it, so we're going to.
Oh, man.
Oh, no, not you.
Oh, good, okay.
They're very excited about it, so.
Okay.
How are they coming with, with offers for the summer?
Okay. They're not there yet, but they have some good possibilities and.
Is it worth, I mean, the book is six months old, but is it work mass in Charlie River in two ninety?
Yeah.
Okay. Doc that, brother.
Okay. Already.
Wow.
No, that's, that's great. And that, you can't do that.
No, it's okay, they are, they're, they're, honestly, that was kind of broken, I said, I think it's quite okay if you ask somebody to solve it.
Yes, yes, we just don't want to say who they are yet, because that's a whole surprise, right?
Okay.
That's great.
Okay. So we do have to.
No.
No, you don't.
We don't know what's gonna happen.
I don't know, yeah, this one, okay. Any other?
I'll say it to them.
Okay. Thank you, is, uh, any new announcements? As far as the appeal?
The appeal is currently now at thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
Thirty-six five?
Yeah.
How many donors total?
Okay, that's right.
Uh, how many donors?
We don't know.
Oh, we don't know. A lot of donors.
One hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
Very good.
And the Amy Wall Scholarship is up to two hundred.
Two hundred, great. All right, any correspondence? We've had quite a good session. Have a. Well.
Moving on. I mean, one, but we had to, well, hold off till the person.
Okay. Now, what's the conversation? Okay, no, hell, okay, all right, very good. Uh, your points? Move them around, Ross.
So, please follow our social media. The ambassadors. Share with friends. Um, the building project, let's dream big, because we still have time to add on more ideas. Um, plans are not set in stone, and we've started the pre-campaign study. I've met a couple times and they're working on, um, Danielle sent them the gift work, so they're looking through genre lists, they're, um, getting lists together and preparing for interviews and focus groups, they'll be interviewing all of you. And, um, a focus group for the board, friends, under fifty, over fifty, and they're looking for new people to be on a pre-campaign committee, which is basically helping find names.
How do we, it's happening for years.
Age group.
I know, but.
It's just a cutoff, it's half your life.
Oh, gee, wow.
But anyway, very exciting, and it's moving along, and they're very committed to getting it done.
Okay.
When we want it done, so. I'll, I'll pass along things like the letter that they're going to send out, inviting to the, um, interviews and things like that. So everyone can take a look if they'd like before we actually do it, but. Um, our new fee-free policy for programs is resulting in an increase in attendance. And people are very excited about that. We had a gentleman coming to the French class, he was so happy, and he said, now I can tell my wife to go buy a new pair of shoes, because I don't have to pay for French. But no names much.
I hope those can pass, right?
Um, we have a new art exhibit, please take a look, it's beautiful, Michael Butler, we had a, a wonderful opening reception and a lot of big wigs from the art world locally came. We made the East Hampton Star with the money shot, as photographer told me.
Uh, with that, if you were.
It would have. Um, we updated our museum passes, so we're adding a few local ones, Paula Krasner House and an Empire Pass, which is Shannon's idea, which is a great idea. Yeah, or State Parks and the Ginna Cott Nation Museum. And we're not going to renew a couple, a few of them, because they just didn't go out. Children's Museum of Manhattan offers lots of free passes, you know, multiple ways. And the other was, it was just, it wasn't physically responsible, because we were paying three hundred or four hundred, five hundred dollars for a pass, and they weren't going out. Um, staff, some of our staff will be taking us to be rising training class at the system starting in February. Um, I've had several meetings with Cirque du Ruff staff. Um, we have a couple of open decisions where we started introducing four. Phase one of Cassie is complete.
Wow.
Tom's happy about that, that is our, um, the platform for printing and our computers. It's been down for a while now, we have new ones that's much more user-friendly. Um, the cybersecurity insurance and the DNO insurance for the board we now have. Backdated to January thirtieth, so we're good. Um, Remmy Tree Service donated pruning our crepe myrtle. Oh, honey. I'm just gonna hear, um, Shannon wrote a grant for our family place, uh, materials from the Bridgehampton Association, they gave us the grant, and Shannon and I went to the reception along with Tom, who was representing another organization. Five hundred dollars. And what else? What is the meetings?
Any question? Nope. Any discussion? So your motion, three reports addressing people. Eric makes the motion.
And I second.
Oh, okay, all those in favor? All right. All right. I'm sorry, oh, the department reports?
I think they, they all was together.
Yeah, yep. Were there any questions about the department? Hearing that, very good, thank you. Um, did you want to go over and finish this? Or have we?
Well, I pretty much talked, I covered that. Um, I did, I, I, sorry, I did call martyrs about the fir tree, and they're going to get back to me. They want to know exactly what kind of fir tree it is. But they're looking back on their records.
Okay. So they don't, so they just.
Well, it was fifteen years ago.
They moved it.
They moved it.
Here to.
Right, so it still exists, two thousand eight. Is it, where is it over by the?
Yeah, it's over at the old Martyr's.
That's still unfinished.
Why?
That's awesome.
It's been here fifteen years. It's really, yes, it's one of the first.
Danielle's still working on the COVID nineteen employee retention credits, which we were passing it over to the accountants.
I, I should have a question about that fir tree, so the tree was moved. And what are we asking martyrs for?
We're asking what it would cost to move it back, which is not ours anymore, or we're asking what the price would be for a similar type tree to replant in the front.
I mean, how big is that thing over?
It's big.
So it's like, even silly to even, it moves, my mind, and why would you buy a tree?
Yeah.
Why would you?
Because it came up, you know. Maybe that could be a, a naming opportunity. I guess people that asked. Yes, so it's more of a or just following up.
Yeah. Anything else on unfinished business? Um, John? And you're about to speak in the hall, yeah, but I'm.
Squeaky floor? The squeaky floor is part of the renovation.
Right. But did we actually think whether the floor in there?
Yes.
Getting addressed enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything on new business? Uh, the vaccination department already revisiting?
We're revisiting it. Um, because I'm telling, so I actually, I polled the Easton libraries. And at this point, nobody has a vaccination policy, Hampton Bayes, no, and the Gansett, Southfold, Manette, Ketchikan, West Hampton, Rogers. Um, East Hampton does still require vaccination, John Germaine did not get vaccinated. I also polled the staff asking if they would be comfortable with not having a vaccination policy any longer. Eight said they would be comfortable. Four said they would not be comfortable. One said depends, and one said I'm happy either way. Um, and the question is, what does vaccination mean at this point? Because we required it when, in twenty twenty? One, twenty twenty-one, and so now at twenty twenty-three, um, if you got vaccinated in twenty twenty-one, are you protecting anyone by getting vaccinated?
Really, why?
And also, just we have a few people to hire, and it will limit our pool. But four people on staff are not comfortable. Yeah, I mean, I do think at this point, it's, it's, it's almost impossible to define what vaccinated is, because, um, I mean, we've all had some varying number of vaccines, we've all had COVID one or more times, I mean, it's sort of like, what?
Right, to the point, to the point of our vaccines were in two thousand twenty-one, and now it's two thousand twenty-three.
Right.
Unless, unless all of a sudden he's gonna say, okay, you have to have a booster every however often, he makes no point.
Yeah, so.
But there's like no guidance as to when, next booster.
Well, yeah, and that's, I guess if they will probably put it with the flu vaccine as a fall vaccine would be my best guess on where they're sort of heading towards in the season, yeah, it'll be an annual one, so even though, just like you can get flu, and like my boy said, flu in May, which is weird, but, you know, you can get it other times of the year, most of the time, if you get it in the fall, it will cover you through the holidays and everyone's together, winter months, and then that will be that now. Which then brings you to the whole what vaccine requirements have companies, libraries or other workplaces have ever had, and, and I think it varies depending on the business and nature of the business and things like that, so for example, hospital one, so we have to have certain vaccines, you have to show that we're immune to, you know, LMR and B and all these things, and you have to get your flu vaccine. And if you did not get your flu vaccine, you had to wear a mask as soon as the, um, the state declared, um, that it was flu season, like now we have circulating flu in New York State, and so if you did not have your sticker on your badge, then you were vaccinated against the flu that season, then you had to wear a mask in any and all PSH area, so that's obviously a hospital policy, this is not an realistic one for other places, but just you know, like, there are a variety of things, and I think it just depends on, you know, you can encourage vaccines, and, you know, but I, I don't know where we are at this point yet, you know?
I mean, in general, we want to encourage vaccines, I mean, especially, you know, flu, you know, minimal.
Yeah.
You know, um. My personal feeling is I think we do want to encourage all vaccines, but at this point, I think it's hard to communicate that. Yeah, it's kind of a little too narrow, it's sort of. I agree, I don't, I don't think there's any. There's no, but putting up, listen, putting up as much silence as we can in places where it kind of, people see it, kind of saying, hey, this is good for you, all right, looking great. We are alive, all right? If you get vaccinated this year, you can take out a free quote.
You gotta. Or umbrella.
Just wait for fun, you know, tell them that you.
And I think that, and I don't know, because it was an anonymous poll, for the staff members that don't feel comfortable, you know, they weren't in on a discussion about it, understanding that are they more protected if their coworkers vaccinated, are they? At this point, I, I, I don't know if they really are. Right? Because I think everyone's actually like, just having.
I got it, and I was
so.
Probably, you know, up for the day.
Right. And so.
I got it.
I mean, it may, yeah, for the, for an individual, it may be less. Right, and, and for coworkers, you know, the vaccine means you're a little bit less likely to pass it, you're gonna recover from it faster, so it does lower the disease burden in a situation, but again, at this point where we all.
Perhaps in the same conversation, then, we consider some sort of educational situation.
Right, yes.
Right, I mean, even just the conversation we just had, kind of seems to, if somebody says that to you, oh, yeah, three years ago, it doesn't, it might, it might change their, their point of view.
Right.
Knowledge is power.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Exactly.
One of the things that we do, uh, we do is we ask people for the vaccination card, if they have it, and if they don't, we just send a note recommending a mask in public. To where's this? It is the Bridgehampton, the Tennesse, um, but I, I work for the Gordon Properties, and so. So we sort of suggest being stuck in a, in a subtle way that we all sort of.
But again, if someone had, you know, their series of vaccines back in twenty twenty-one, has not had any since.
Wrong vaccinated, right?
In twenty twenty-one, the library required one? Two. Two, the series. I mean, but if you got J and J, that's considered your that's a one-shot, so that was your series, so if you got that one, that was considered vaccinated.
Wow.
Okay. And I, once you said that, I also want to talk about the quarantine policy, but do you want to? Sarah, any thoughts?
There we go. You're on.
No, I, 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 I really have to defer to the, the tenor there, um. So I, 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 it's so different here, so I just defer to you guys there.
Okay.
It looks too broad, but I would suggest that you recommend to the people here all, for vaccines, because we could require it at this point.
Even hide a recommendation to Beverly, see, and a recommendation to use masks if you don't have it.
Which means? So quarantines. So quarantine, the CDC website is saying quarantine for five days if exposed and you have symptoms. But if you have been exposed and are not exhibiting symptoms, you don't have to quarantine, but you mask, test on day five. Um, and if you are, if you do have symptoms, whether or not you're testing positive yet, you stay home and quarantined for the first five days. And you wear a mask for ten. Okay, so, so isolation and quarantine remember are two separate things, right? Yes, you have your isolation is when you actually test positive, so yes, this is assuming that they're all testing negative. Mm-hmm. And then remembering that at-home tests are a little bit less sensitive, um, whether or not you have people go who are testing negative but have been exposed, you would have a PCR, you know, those are the questions that I think, um, are difficult to answer, because they are, um, you know, yes, you might have to pay for PCR at this point, and, you know, so I would say, what was really nice, it was like shocking during the pandemic, it was like, people are like, ah, I wash my immune so much more, I was like, why aren't people washing their immune? They can't, it's very hot, whatever, um, so that people might actually stay home when they're sick. Mm-hmm. Whether they have COVID or not, would be really a lot.
You know, again, and honestly, it, I agree with you, but our culture, it's just so odd to stay home because you have sniffles.
Or not even.
But even having sniffles, in, in our culture, it's just so hard, and it's part of, it's part of the change we need to make, I mean, that's part of it, if you're not feeling, we can stay home.
But if you were at a party, and then you found out two days later that someone two days earlier, you know, we're having people staying home for five days. Okay, those people, if they have no symptoms, they should be at work, but I would err on the side of saying, like, we recommend if you've been exposed, if you had a really good exposure, someone in your household tested positive, you know, someone you went to dinner with, you know, and, you know, wear a mask on when you're. Don't, like, wear the mask for ten days and, and use a test. Wear the mask for five days and test on day five, and if you're negative at that point, you don't have, if you don't have symptoms, you're good to go. I mean, these are sort of common, I think, at least in the, in the, in the real world, like, when you see somebody wearing a mask, you don't assume that they're sick, like, you know, I think, you know, a lot of, you know, like China, for example, and those types of things, they've done this forever, since SARS, since, you know, they wear for pollution, since they wear for, maybe, maybe I'm gonna be sick, I mean, I remember the beginning of this whole pandemic, you know, or kids, or Ross, and there's a lot of, you know, Chinese kids there and things like that, and they would, they wore their masks, because they do, parents were like, we got COVID, and I was like, no, they're wearing masks, because they give a shit if I get COVID. I haven't got a vaccine, like, oh, God, and it was really, um, you know, it's a very, you know, we're sort of getting there culturally, and I think people don't really make faces when people wear masks anymore, and, you know, if you're in a grocery store, and half the people who work there have masks, and half don't, and half the people there have masks, and who are shopping, and half don't. I don't think anyone really cares anymore, it's not, you know, and I don't assume that they're sick when they wear a mask, right?
Anecdotally, I, I didn't have a cold last year, I wasn't wearing a mask, but.
So where's the others?
It's about the, uh, we have to.
The water.
But I don't mean.
Do you have, would you say this is almost a review for schools, and just, right now, there's this state policy for schools, it's just.
Or, or we use the CDC, we use the CDC, because that's what I send the staff, at least I haven't exposed, is I use this, this handy tool. Which is very handy, and then it tells you when you were exposed, and it just tells, it tells you what to do.
Yeah, you can.
So we just.
CDC recommendation.
I agree. That's. Do we need to rewrite that policy, though? Yes, because the policy is if you're exposed and you're not vaccinated six months, then you stay home for five days, that's just too complicated. Yeah, that's like, very straightforward.
No, 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 so that one, it needs, it needs.
We have it.
No, we can pass, fair. I'm gonna turn on this tape for them. It's this one.
Those are the ones we like, you like.
These, these, these are the, these are the cheaper of all. Is it, is it good to just have it written out, spelled word for word, or just as. Well, if we're doing, if you're doing the, um, well, you can post the CDC policy next to it, and, you know, as an agenda, and then, and then when the CDC policy changes, you can just change the agenda. As opposed to having to rewrite the policy. So just as for the CDC.
Yeah. Well, quick question, so what we thought to be on, when does the employee use their sick time? And when does the library pay COVID time? And how much COVID time?
Like, wouldn't they have to test positive to get used COVID? Yes. For five days, so I, I think they get five days.
And what's this thing, policy today?
It's, it's ten days a year.
Ten days where the library pays for sick days?
Yes, and they get the carry that over on the year, year.
Oh, and, and there's a separate COVID.
But I think it's five per episode?
It was never re-ran.
So it's ten?
It's twenty-one.
Oh, no.
From twenty twenty, that was the last written one. So then we were following the CDC, when the CDC had the quarantine at home, but they were testing positive, and then we were paying them five days. But what do we do when, in a great context, I've been in, I've been in contact somebody that has COVID. I've tested negative, but I want to err on the side of caution and wait to see if I have a symptom.
Sorry, no.
No, that's their they have to, they have to test.
Yes, they have to have it.
Test COVID.
Yes.
Will they home test or, uh, PCR?
So, I think if they have symptoms and they're testing negative, and they call about taking the home time, they go get a PCR. Um, and that won't really tell us. You know, I'm just hard, because sometimes people will then turn positive on day four, and maybe they would have exposed everybody, but honestly, I mean, that's happening all the time, anyway, so.
Yeah. I have to ask, I mean, COVID is, is, is is part of life now.
Yeah.
And, but so is the flu.
Yeah.
Um, and, and there's other things, I'm sure that are, come on, so the question is, why does COVID get treated as a special illness? Um, it would be sort of like if employee had cancer, they would get X amount of, 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 of sick time if they had heart disease.
Yeah, we'll handle that, can't actually.
Well, I think we're in this process of changing it from a special disease to like it's part of, right, and I think that's reflected in, in like our government, you know, New York City is dropping all the stuff, I think in New Haven or something like that, I mean, I, you know, that a lot of the COVID things, so it's sort of in the process of it, and yeah, I do think it's probably reasonable at this point, you know, to think about, I definitely am changing down five, like, for now, and I think that.
With the goal of.
With the goal of making it just a normal thing, but I think the problem with making it a normal thing is in you get, you know, I mean, I've had patients who test positive for the flu, and they're like, well, I'm getting it, I'll say. You know. I have no words for people, I, I don't know what to say, I.
Right, but enter that to your point, if this go to work and not get paid, or don't go to work and not get paid. I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, that's, yeah, and so that's why I think there's that. But that's why we have sick days, I mean, this is why they think, you know, we have ten, and, and they roll over, so they're made for you know, pre-COVID, that you could stay home and.
They roll over as well.
They would, yes.
Unlimited, so.
Every year.
So, yeah.
So it's.
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's, I hate to say it, but I, I they, they roll over, but whenever you retire.
Oh, well, you only get, um.
You're off when, at seven, so you only.
There's police departments, and these guys, the, the police chief from Southern Village, walked out with a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar, you know.
I love, I love seventy days when I left the center. But I, but I took things, and then, and the five days.
You go to work sick.
They had an incentive that, and this, I don't agree with this, that if you didn't take a sick day all year, you got a bonus. Let's say schools have that. So let's encourage everyone to count yours.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, oh, no, no, yeah.
I know, but I think, um, uh, something, um, if you want to encourage people to be present if they're okay, and just to be at home and.
Oh, I was gonna say, five days, is that, so let's say they work Monday through Friday. And they get, they test positive when they get home on Wednesday. Okay? So you have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they come back to school to work on Tuesday, but that's only Thursday, Friday, Monday, that's only three COVID days.
So that's all.
So that's fine, okay, so they don't get an extra. No.
No, the operation in their house is staying to. No, the operation here can have sustained to many people leaving. It's not that.
That's right.
You have to think as well of the running of the library, you look at. The ability of having the personnel here, like those. I think five days is a fair thing, and so the CDC is, they recommend that.
Unless, of course, they don't really say, which might. And then they can also.
I guess after that, then it just wasn't the regular sick days.
And I think there could also be like. Like, let's say, we did have somebody who got super sick from COVID in the hospital for three weeks, like, we would bring that up. What's that?
Just ability support, yeah.
Well, yes, but that's also one of these things that there has been cases in, in our history of the library where we had a sick employee who. Went way through their time, I'll make a push on an individual basis of like, okay, let's for this person, because they have to do this and this, this is what we're gonna do. So, but that's the. The things that really global people.
Yeah, that's also, I mean, similar, we have a. There's a policy, I mean.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think.
Yeah, that's important to say.
Okay. So what are we, what are we doing? We're going from twenty one days to five days for COVID, hey?
Wear a mask after exposure, and you follow the CDC policy.
Yeah.
For quarantine and such, and you, we prefer everyone be vaccinated.
So I can remove that from job postings, the requirement.
So we were.
Oh, yeah.
So is that completely clear, or do we have any note, notes on it to come up with that resolution, okay? So, uh, with that assurance, um, is there a motion to impact that policy?
Do you want it written or? Yeah, that'd be a good idea, so, so let's, so it will be. Call the board trustees. Vaccine requirement to be removed, but vaccine speed. Who's writing this down? That COVID. Uh, sick days are, will be five. And that to our source COVID, we'll follow CDC recommendations. Um, for. Wear a mask and fully confessing on day five.
Is it five per?
And we recommend.
Per year.
Is it five per year or incident? Of COVID?
Per year.
Damn, what is it now? Is it five per year or five per incident of COVID?
We, ours was twenty one for the year. So I would, I would bring it down by. We didn't have to, so that was written per.
Well, that was written also when we thought you got COVID once and you were.
Right.
So, um. Okay, I think that's. All those in favor? Next.
Oh. Colum- Columbus Day and/or Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So before, just a quick question, so we now have a, um, a draft of a resolution. As, as secretary, is it my responsibility to type this up in a? Or is it?
Yes, yeah, and then we'll, and then it goes into the minutes.
But I, I don't do that today. Thank you.
How do we want to have it on our calendars? Columbus Day. Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, it seems that in twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty two, it was Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, we've had no complaints about that.
Compromise called Indigenous Columbus Day?
No.
Oh, boy.
Is it, you know, it's one of the only cases that we call things.
Um, and actually, I think in a lot of our, um, social media things, we just called it indigenous anyway, there was not any complaint about it. But for our official.
How about we split? You wanna do indigenous slash Columbus?
Yes.
Okay.
And then a following year, you have Columbus.
It'll just be indigenous, yeah, because once the state says it, then it's.
That was so easy.
Do we have to do else?
I think we probably ought to, just so that it's formal decision. So we're settled on that, so it's gonna be indigenous. Peoples' Day.
Slash Columbus.
Okay. So a motion for that? Eric makes that one, Eric.
Please second.
Okay, all this in favor? Good, all right.
Been years since I got to make a motion.
All right, uh, designation of reserve funds, and someone else might need to explain what this is about.
This is about. This is about. When we have surplus funds. What do we do with them? Maybe Danielle say more about it, just explain why we would do that. Not to put you on the spot, hey, Joe, remember why that's on that channel?
So I think this has to do.
Oh, because we learned on there.
Well, I think this has to do with the whole, like, we do have the trustee reserve fund, and it's just kind of like. Hanging out. And, um, yeah, but we should have, say, like, five hundred thousand is in, in reserve for, um. Not going overseas, but for like building repairs. And five hundred thousand is in reserve for catastrophic pandemics or something, like, we should have sort of a designation. So that if someone's looking, you know, so that it's not like, oh, they're sitting there, so that we're like hoarding. Money without having a purpose in mind for ragging.
And then why do we have a budget vote? Could maybe the finance committee meet and sort of get that? So that's. Who's on the finance committee?
I am.
You can see I have everything, I can tell you that's hard to learn.
It's always right, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that just goes on to. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, at, uh, four eighteen, we will enter executive session, and. Who is going to make that move?
It's a, and it's a. Danielle, could you help them? I actually have, there's a lot on these things. So I have. Separate agenda, if you're interested. But that'll help you, Steve and me.
Does anyone? Is there any discussion on dispersal payroll or financial reports? The motion?
I am motion.
Thank you, uh, all those in favor? Operational resolution.
We did that one. Oh, no, we have to.
No, we have to do each one, please.
But though we do that, we do have some good news.
We do?
Yes, from Bruce Kaplan's estate. Just got a letter. In his wealth.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I, I. I'm a reporter. And I have to sit through, I have sat through a lifetime of meeting, always. You know, quiet, thinking to myself, here I am. I just can't control myself, like.
There's nothing to be wrong with, nothing wrong with being excited for parties, parties are great. Parties are great, the good republic, it's the pride of the good group. Yes, uh, but that is really nice, that is big news.
Great, so we're getting? Three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Royal lessers.
Of one sixteenth of his estate.
And books.
And books.
And books.
But we've taken them already.
What was it?
We have. I think that two thousand or the lesser, uh, one sixteenth of.
Going the.
I don't know where it's going, I just. Yeah, where's it going here? Um, maybe announcements. I don't know, I don't, you know.
Um, we just, yeah, I think it goes into. Announcements, because that's where a lot of, when we've had, um, other.
Okay, yeah.
Stuff that goes in there, yeah.
All right. So now we get back to. Resolutions, uh.
And just all the financials were, even though we're only one motion at all, yeah. Yeah, that's a pretty updated number.
Uh, so. Outside of. The one that we were doing early in there, but. Figures out.
I think, I think the almond one is the only one.
Um, Columbus Day. Did we do that?
Yeah.
We did do that.
I have so many takers.
We did Columbus Day and we did the, the COVID stuff.
Yeah.
Oh, because that was only.
But we need to just write that out. And then it sends to.
Anything from the?
Okay. And the rest that we forgot to, uh, committees. Correct, remind us of.
Do we, do we have to make a resolution on almond cheese? On the what?
No, just fine.
But it stopped becoming a.
It stopped.
Right.
I mean. It stopped. It's good. Let's find.
This is.
But most unfamiliar about she got the rights.
So it's one result.
How many?
It was something I had read about a long time ago, but. Us, I asked.
We'll discuss. Okay. Anything else? Do we need to pick a date for the finance committee?
My calendar's on this.
Oh, sorry, I, okay, yes. Wednesday or?
I'm still Thursday, not Thursday.
I'm about to be working. Not Wednesday. Next one is done? Um, I'm in the city when it comes, if the weekend in Tulsa, so I'm getting back, so I might be able to.
For Friday?
For Friday.
Friday is Friday.
Like Friday the twenty fourth.
You could watch five, but we won't start right after.
Well, let's, let's.
Friday after three P M.
About at three. So this is Friday. And then if, if we find we have a conflict, well. And I'll send out a Zoom mic.
Okay.
So Friday. Three P M.
We said three?
Three.
And the policy committee? Or we can.
There.
Policy is Sarah and Bachi, Stephen and Louis.
Maybe I'll send out an email about that.
Yeah.
And they also, they, um. It's just like. The scholarship committee has to also meet, because we need that. By March first, we can. You guys.
A quick question, this is, is there a portal on our website? Where people can. The library director, how about the end wall, is that on?
Not on the friends, it's under the library.
Right, you click the donate button, and then that page allows you to designate where you want.
Okay, anything else? So time for that special, would you like to make that special move?
Me, sure.
Five, ten P M.
I'll make that wish.
Oh, second, Eric, second, Eric again.
Just do any second. Okay, all right.